All right, once again, welcome everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this Region 12 Board of Education meeting, November 16, 2015. It's about 10 after 7 after we have had our cupcakes and coffee. I will take attendance. Anthony Amato.
Here.
Valerie Anderson.
Here.
Alan Brown.
Yes, here.
Greg Cava.
Here.
Rebecca Devine. Rebecca is not here tonight. Michelle Gora.
Here.
Emily Hibbert.
Here.
I'm here. Jennifer Pote.
I'm here.
Michael Sinatra.
Present.
Peter Tagley.
Here.
And Sidney Warabel.
Here.
Who?
Sidney Warabel.
Do we have a new member from the board?
Yes, I would like to. I'd like to first welcome Sidney, who was recently elected at a Town of Roxbury Town Meeting and is the newest member of the Board of Ed from Roxbury. So Sidney, welcome and good luck.
Good, so she doesn't leave after what meeting?
That's right. Get out of that.
All right. Opportunity for the public to comment on agenda items. Is there anyone who would like to address it?
Oh, did you put, there's some stuff there.
All right, see you, Noone, then I'll move on. Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda is the minutes of the business meeting of November 2nd, 2015. Is there anyone who wants to remove anything from the consent agenda? Dean Owen, and the consent agenda is approved. Item 4, Report of the Chair. Just a couple of things. First of all, I want to, on behalf of the Board of Education, thank all the citizens of the towns of Bridgewater, Roxbury, and Washington who came out to vote in the referendum on November 10th. No matter how you voted, the fact that you participated, it was a great turnout from the electorate, so thank you very much for participating in the process. For those members of the Board of Ed and the staff, Dr. Costino and her staff, the Steering Committee and others who did a tremendous amount of work to prepare for the referendum, I want to say thank you to them as well. Also, to the town workers who worked again, manning the polls from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., only a week or so after the municipal election, thank you to them as well. I also want to state something just for myself, speaking for myself, we can discuss it later, but we don't have to. This issue with regard to whether, the fact that there's a possibility that the state may not come through with the funding in the spring, I will just say for myself, without the Board backing me up at this point, but I believe that the intention is that this project will not go forward without the approval of the state funding. The Board of Ed has no desire or incentive to go forward with this project, obviously, without the state funding being approved. We hope sometime in the early spring. All right, Superintendent's report, Dr. Costino?
Okay, thank you. I also want to just give my thanks to everyone who helped us get the AgSTEM vote to the voters. It's wonderful, not only did it pass, but that it passed in all three towns. I think that was a solid vote of approval for not only the AgSTEM program, but for Chapag and keeping it really a vibrant school system for many, many years to come. I do want to give special thanks to Kim Gallo. She worked very, very hard to make this happen. She did endless, endless hours, as well as all of the other staff and the Board members and the parent volunteers. It was just really, everyone came together and it was just wonderful. So I think we're really, you know, on a good path right now. So thank you to everyone and stay tuned for more information.
And Bill Davenport.
And Bill Davenport, I also want to thank too. Thank you, Bill. Bill, as a consultant to help us plan for an agri-science program, he is definitely the expert in Connecticut, so we were happy to be able to borrow his expertise to help us. So we're really, we're thrilled. We really are thrilled. And I also want to thank everyone who wrote a letter to the editor. We had so many positive letters in the papers, and I think that really is just very powerful for people to read from so many different people in different towns, elected officials, Board members, parents, volunteers. It really, it warmed my heart every time I saw a positive letter. So I just also want to thank everyone. Couple of things going on here, then I'll get into the moving forward part. I am going to CAE on Friday and Saturday with some Board members. That's the CAE CAPS Conference, and I believe we have our new Board member, Sidney Owen, so that'll be baptism by fire, good for you. And Michelle Gora and Jen, right? And we have a great time. So you're gonna, we not only learn, we have fun. So it's really, it's a good time. So we're glad you can join us. Tomorrow night, is tomorrow night Wednesday? No, Wednesday night, I'm going to the Cornucopia in Torrington where we will honor our award recipients in leadership from the Litchfield County Superintendent's Association. Very excited. I think we have a Board member's daughter who's being recognized. Am I right? Is it Maddie? Maddie's being recognized, so we're very excited about that. It's a beautiful evening, and so we're excited. We have 5th graders who come with their families and a junior family and a senior family. So, from Chapag. Oh, and I think an 8th grade family. So I'm very excited about it. It's gonna be a nice evening. Today, I met with my committee of five to work on Teacher of the Year for Region 12. We're gonna participate in the state contest, and we'll be in the next year's winner. So we're really excited about it. It's very prestigious. Bill in the back was Teacher of the Year one year, and many other teachers, and he's trying to be very, he's hiding back there. Exactly. I had to say it, though. And so I think it's not, it's really important to recognize the teachers, and it's not just always the best teacher that wants you recognized, but it's a teacher who will represent what's best about the region, promoting a love of learning, promoting community service, helping families and the community just get stronger and better and appreciate education. And I think we have a lot of teachers who deserve to be recognized. So it will be interesting who will be our first recipient. And then that person will go to the state contest, and then there's a national contest. So we'll see. So that's exciting. Minds in Motion, I just want to let you know, we are moving forward with that. CAG is the Connecticut Association of the Gifted, but it really focuses on innovation and creativity, and we are doing a Minds in Motion workshop on Saturday, February 27, here at Chapag. We will get students from all over the area, maybe the state, and I'm hoping that you'll stop in. It's in the afternoon. At 1:00, there'll be a speaker for parents, there'll be workshops for parents, and then there are workshops for the kids. We do have Joe Morosky coming, so we think that's gonna be a really big draw, and he's doing some kind of physical stuff with the kids in the gym. And we have some robotics, and we have a lot of really cool stuff. So, you know, I'm really trying to promote doing some more enrichment activities and really bringing in some more programs for our families. And so we're hoping that that's gonna be great. I was invited last week, Thursday, Friday, to the BEST Summit. It's bringing every stakeholder together, and it's run by the, it's called the CCM, which is Connecticut's Municipalities, I think it's the Convention of, or the, something like that, but it's the municipalities. And basically, they wanted to have leaders from all over the state come and talk about some of the problems that Connecticut is facing, from transportation, regionalization, quality of life, the economy, the workforce. So it was Thursday night into Friday, and it was very interesting, and I think it's getting people to start to talk in Connecticut. People see that, you know, we're really at a crossroads, and we have to start dealing with a lot of issues. There are a lot of people there. There was, AFSNE was there, CAPS was there, AFL-CIO was there, Aquarian Water was there, people from transportation, heads of fire and medical and police. So a lot of the select people were there from their towns. Barbara Henry was there. So it was very interesting. So hopefully, I was very honored to be included as a person representing CAPS, and it was just, it was very interesting as a first step. So I thought it was really good to be included with that. I gave you two handouts. The first handout was just an article that was in today's paper. I know there's been a lot of confusion, and I may be partly to blame for that, that we really didn't have a clear handle on what was going on at the state. But I am confident, when I say to people, I'm confident the state has the money for us, I am confident of that. I mean, I have spoken to the Commissioner, spoken to Art O'Neill, spoken to the Legislature. People are gonna support this. We just have to now go through the steps. And one of the big steps was that the towns had to vote in the affirmative to pass our part of the bonding in order to move forward with the process with the state. So that passed, so that's fabulous. I asked Bob to get us the official timeline, so that this way we have the official timeline, and he got this from the state document. Part of what's going on with the state that makes things a little more confusing than normal is that the Department of Construction Services at the state is now, their job was taken over by the Department of Administrative Services. So you have two different plans of action, the way the construction services did, the way now the Department of Administrative Services, DAS, does, and they're trying to find their way. So when we call for information, sometimes they don't know the answer, which is not hard to believe. So basically, once everything passed on Tuesday evening, Bob on Wednesday worked, and he finished the ED-049 as best he could, and that was delivered to the state. So everything is at the state that needed to be at the state. And he has it stamped by someone signed that they have it. Now it has to start to go through the process, okay? So one of the things we did, and I'm gonna start, and Bob chime in. If you see here the C, the C means that it's things that we have completed. The I, so it's up to step 9. And step 9 is a request for proposals for the bid for Architectural Engineering. And we just met today with the Facilities Committee, and we have, we had already posted the request. So we have, two companies have given us proposals. So we have set up interviews for November 30th at 5:15. All Board of Education members are invited to attend. Each architect will do a presentation, and after that, the committee, which is the Facilities Committee, which you all voted in on Friday morning, will make a decision. And then we're hoping on December 7th, our next Board meeting, they will make a recommendation to hire an architect. And that's where we're at. That's like the big critical piece right now, because the architect then has to start to work on all the other pieces that are gonna fall into place. So with that said, Bob, why don't you continue taking people through where we are and where, what, yeah, my-
Can I just ask a question about, are the bids closed at this point, or could you-
The architect bids are closed.
Architects are closed.
Yes.
What about the other-
Nothing else has been done, just that.
Architect. Okay.
People are raising their hand.
I'm sorry, Greg. Yeah, I just wanted to elaborate on that. Yes, we've closed the request for quotations for the architects. However, if the committee decides that they are not satisfied with the architects' proposal, we could reopen it.
Mm-hmm. Okay. You know, Bob is the one.
So after we get done with, if we're successful in getting this to you by the 7th of December, the next step would be to put another RFP on the street to determine and get some requests filed for a construction manager. Could be a construction manager or a construction manager at risk. So we'll determine at that point what we're going to put on the street, get those back in. That group or that company will again be vetted in the same way as the architect, presented to the Board for a recommendation, and ultimately, the hiring of that firm. The meantime, the architect is working on your plans and specifications and getting bid documents ready. The goal is that we wait for the approval by the state legislature of all these projects that'll happen in the legislative session. We'll get a notification at that point that we could proceed, and then we'll start looking for real bids on the project. The project will probably either in its entirety or be phased in in sections of what's available to be done in a certain sequence. Simultaneously, they'll be working on the science lab portion of this as well, because that is a little bit more critical, 'cause there's a time constraint, because you can do only certain work in there while students aren't present. There is certain components of it. As we progress through that, that gets you, basically, past step 11, and on step 12, the drawings that have been worked on along with the construction manager will be sent in bid, and we'll follow what's commonly referred to as best practices, the best way to get this staged, so we either get these big documents in phases, and the architect will work with us to get that in place. So you'll probably be seeing a rolling set of bids and receipt of bids, and then work. Site work could be a bid package in and of itself, and that may be the first that'll be ready, because that's relatively easy to do. The other pieces would follow with actual construction and the renovation of the tech space or the two garages down there that'll be incorporated. When you get up to step 13, we're bidding this, and we're now at the point where the Board's gonna start awarding contracts for actual work to get done. Once we get the first one in place, we have to notify. Step 14 is a critical piece that we must report to the state, the start of construction date. That gets us in the flow of catching the money coming back as we file the application to draw down funding. And beyond that, it just follows the sequence all the way through till step 18, when a final audit is done of this project. All along the way, the Building Committee is working along with getting all the documents and the bid packages out on the street and making sure that the construction is being done to the satisfaction of the Board. So by the time we're finished, a typical project, a quick project is two years. I've seen it go off six, seven years in some instances. This, I don't anticipate to be that kind of project. It's not from ground zero. It's not from nothing. We're just adding on to this building to meet that deadline, and we want to get in here by the 2018.
And so as we move in that direction, there are two committees that also move. We have the Agri-science Steering Committee, which Kim is on, and which will meet, and they're really looking at the curriculum piece, okay? Making sure we are ready for the curriculum, inserting the STEM pieces, making sure that, you know, we're gonna have the equipment, everything we need. So they're giving the information. And then we also have a Building Committee, which we are working on. The Facilities Committee, Greg and Don and Jim are involved as the Facility Committee also, because we have to appoint, Jim has to appoint, a Building Committee to lead us through this process. And a Building Committee really needs to be people who are in the field, architects, engineers, attorneys, people like that who are really gonna help us move this project forward, project managers. I'm happy to say that our new Board member is a project manager, correct?
A project engineer, yes.
Project engineer. So I think she's gonna be a real, a big asset to us, so we're thrilled that you're here on many levels. So once we have some names, and then Jim will appoint the Building Committee.
And this schedule, this schedule will get, it'll expand as we get further into it, because interim steps will start filling in dates and getting more specific to it. These are the general outline of where we have to be, but as we get through the process, it starts to, the list starts to look like it's growing, but it's really just filling in the missing pieces when we have the proper information so we could get milestones to make sure we meet them.
All right. Well- Have we decided that we want to have both projects together? Would it make sense to do the science labs separately because the money is different and the timeline is different?
No, and the reason for no is because one of the things that makes that science lab more affordable for us is the fact that you do not have to have separate mobilization for it. Anytime you're doing a project, you have to mobilize to get it up to speed. You have to get the crews here, you have to get the site developed and set out and everything. And the idea is, is you want the projects continuing as part of a single project, or you're gonna pay double mobilization costs, and that, and those could be significant. It could be millions of dollars.
However, we're not, well, correct me if I'm wrong, we're not really doing site development for that, so that, you know, I could see if everything was going along in a parallel way, but that's gonna be actual construction, separate from site development.
No, but the reason why, the reason why the science labs don't cost 5 million, instead cost 3.6 is because we're saving those, well, that's what the architect did. That's when they brought their estimate down. They brought it down, because rather than doing it as a separate project, they were able to combine it in and to get a lot of the various categories to line up so that you're doing it once rather than doing it twice. There's no real reason to take it separately. That has nothing to do with the date of when the project starts, but it has to do with the way the project is conceived, bid, and managed.
And when's the completion, is the completion date then going to be the same for both?
Not necessarily. Whatever's finished first is gonna be finished first. My guess is that the science labs may be finished before, depending on how the construction sequence is done, they may be finished before the AgScience School. They may not. I mean, again, you don't know that until the construction manager and the architect sit down and create a sequence, a construction sequence and a critical pattern.
Can I suggest that when you, the Building Committee, Facilities and now Building, go through the Architectural Engineering bids and the Construction Management Services, that we just mention that the science labs tend to be more critical for our present program?
Yeah, we understand that.
And we want to save money, but I think that that should be sooner rather than later.
Yeah, see, my guess is that that end of the building will start on the early side, because first of all, they're gonna have to move the tennis court over there before they can tear them down over here. So that ends up getting done early, but as far as the inside of the building, there's no real reason why the first summer, that building couldn't be, that portion of the building couldn't be gutted and that work couldn't start at that point in time. But again, somebody, somebody who knows a lot more than any of us is gonna sit down and look at this and figure out how to do it to bring it into within budget and the best, the best number possible. And they'll do value engineering to figure out whether they do this differently or use different materials here and these other things, you know. This will be, try to keep the price affordable, because there are always gonna be things that impact price along the way that are gonna increase it, potential field conditions or changes we have to make. So what you want to do is you want to get ahead of it and try to get that price under control to start with and manage it properly. And Sidney, correct me on any of this, because this is what you do. You've actually been involved in building STEM schools where none of us have. Anthony?
Just a point of clarification. The economic plan assumed that projects would be done by the same firm at essentially the same time for the projects. So that was baked into the business plan. The point about the actual sequencing and the prioritization, Greg was following, there's a lot of detail on how we sequence this, but the overarching project was one cohesive project.
Mike?
Just to follow up on Valerie's point, I think, the point is a good one in the sense that we've talked about some STEM programs that we want to start immediately on, not for years from now, but immediately. So for example, one of our ideas, I know, that we've been talking about is trying to start up AP Chemistry possibly next year. So it may be that you and your staff need to meet to come up with a plan on how that might be possible on an interim basis, even if the science labs aren't ready to go. Could we run AP Chem with our current labs as they are?
Well, just to add to that, on Wednesday, Frank Labanka is coming in to work with our administrative team and then the science teachers at Chapag. Now Frank Labanka, for those of you who recognize the name, is the principal of the Danbury Westside Academy, which will be one of our feeder schools, and he's also a science inquiry expert. So we are gonna really have some good conversations on how we really look at our science program for kids, how do we get these classes in, and how do we really become more engaging and inquiry-based in our science program. So we're really very excited to have him, and he's gonna be working with us for the year, and it's just great connection also. And we hear from him and some of his parents that they're so excited about the AgSTEM for a place to come after the academy. So we're getting some really positive feedback, not only from in our district, from outside our district also. The other thing I just wanted to add that I had sent around, I just made a copy today, this was in Republican American, and they always have to put a nice flashy headline, but I think the important piece here is that Art O'Neill, who is totally behind us and has been a wonderful friend to Chapag, really talks about how he's confident that we're getting the money, and we just have to go through the legislative process, and really, that's all we need to do, is go through the process. So people, we are not concerned at all here that we're not going to be funded. We just have to go through the process. So we're really very excited about that, and I just wanted to give it to you so that you had it.
All right, anyone else? I just want to say that what happened on Friday was that the Board appointed the current Board of Education Facilities Committee as the Building Committee for this project, as the interim Building Committee for this project. I will be appointing the final Building Committee after getting input from the Facilities Committee, which is now our interim Building Committee, from our AgSTEM Steering Committee. I am working on the structure of how these committees are gonna interrelate with each other, the Steering Committee and the Building Committee, and when I resolve that, I will have input from folks, I will relay that to the Board, probably through the Superintendent. So I don't, I don't know exactly when that will be, but as soon as possible. So I just want to, folks understand that. Anyone else? All right? Dr. Costino?
I'm done. That's it.
Okay. Nothing else for the Superintendent? All right, item 6 then, Policies, first reading of Policy 5114, Suspension and Expulsion to Due Process. Michelle?
Yep, so if you, this policy was included in your packet, if you pull up the policy, you will see the highlighted language is the new language. And just to summarize, this is based on a new law that is designed to discourage the out-of-school suspension, out-of-school suspension of students in grades K through 2. So a lot of the language that you'll see says grades 3 through 12 inclusive, because they're trying to make sure that we're doing out-of-school suspensions for K through 2 as little as possible. Apparently, there are some exceptions that were just kind of funny. They kind of basically say you can't do it, and then they say accept, and then it's extreme safety concerns. So that's, all of the language that is additional is pertaining to that, the new K through 2 exception for out-of-school suspension.
Valerie?
I'm trying to find it here. I'm just kind of horrified to see that pre-K is included in the range of grade. I was kind of horrified to see that pre-K is included in the range of grade. I mean, I would not like to see that. I can't imagine that a pre-K child would qualify for suspension.
Are you suggesting that it not be included in the policy?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the, this policy 5114 for first reading with the exclusion of pre-K in the, and I will find it eventually.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for too.
Yeah.
All right, hold on, it's been moved. Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion? All right, there's no second. Is there another motion? Greg?
Yeah, I'll move that we accept this policy as written for a first reading.
All right, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's removed and seconded. Greg, you want to add anything?
Yeah, I did. I, there were, it's a bit of, it's a somewhat complicated policy. I mean, it already exists in large measure. The only question I had was whether there were any, whether this policy was, because it's been looked at in conjunction with other policies, to make sure that there isn't a, any type of a, things that don't quite mesh.
Conflict.
Yeah, conflicts with existing policies. Because there's all kinds of provisions in here that I think touch on other policies that we have. And I'm trying to find the one spot that bothered me most and now I can't find it.
I think the secretary has handed hard copies out of the policies. They may be in front of you if that would help you.
No, that won't help actually.
Okay.
Well...
Is there anything else?
I would just say, Greg, that like you said, most of this policy has been on the books for a while. So if it was in conflict with another pre-existing policy, we would have to shut up by now. A lot of our policies cross-reference with others, especially when it comes to discipline and other areas like that. But this, this new law is really sort of drawing attention to the pre-K through second grade, trying to exclude them as much as possible from suspension and expulsion. So I don't see a lot of areas where it should conflict, assuming it was not already in conflict.
And Michelle, wasn't it recently that we had Katie look at our policies in terms of that kind of a discrepancy? That would be something I would think they would have caught.
Hopefully, in the audit, yes. They, they, they'll do, so when they review our policies, they would let us know if things were outdated or not following the latest law. I think they did the mandatory update or references were required or in conflict. So they would put notes in for things that were, didn't need to be updated because of laws being passed, but because of incongruous in the manual, so, yeah.
All right, is there anything else? It's been moved and seconded for, to approve 5114 for a first reading. Is there anything else? Yes, Valerie?
I just wanted to point out the section. It's under F, mandatory expulsion, F5. Is this specific? I mean, I understand these are dire circumstances having to do with firearms.
Mm-hmm.
But I...
Oh, PHH, section F, gotcha, sorry.
But I still find that repugnant.
All right. Well, I don't disagree. I mean, it is repugnant to talk about the concept, even to entertain the concept of expelling a preschooler, but should they come with a firearm or other martial art devices, which is what this is pretty much limited to? I mean, if they're there with firearms or nunchucks, I think I'm a little bit concerned about how they ended up here with those items.
Well, but we're...
And only, I'll tell you why. Because there's a recent case in the news in which a, I think a two or three-year-old child shot their brother to death with a firearm and they pulled it out of mommy's purse, I think.
Except, except, we're punishing the child, not the parents. Obviously, we can call the police on the parents for having this available to this poor child, but why are we punishing the child? It's a preschooler. I mean, I'm all for draconian measures when we're talking about safety of the, of the student body, but I just think that this, I don't know, mentioning pre-K children as, you know, mandatory expulsion is just going too far. You're punishing practically an infant.
But, hold on, I'm sorry, if I may. These things would have to be taken up on a case-by-case basis. Valerie, I assume you're probably correct...
It's mandatory.
It would have to be taken up on a case-by-case basis. I assume that 99.9%, you're absolutely correct, something like this would not happen. But I don't believe that's a reason to exclude it from our policy. In the event that something horrible happened or an unforeseen circumstance, I believe that we should have it covered in our policy. Michael?
And just to bring up a point too, they specify an out-of-school suspension may be given. It doesn't say it must be given. So that's point one. Point two is that out-of-school suspensions can vary in length. I know, you know, at the high school level, an out-of-school suspension for drugs would be different than an out-of-school suspension for probably bringing a gun to school, I would imagine, but the length would vary. And so this doesn't say anything about a mandatory length of the out-of-school suspension. It may be that the school needs to make a very brief out-of-school suspension for a very young child to make sure that the situation is being contained and addressed before they're allowed back into school.
Yeah, but Michael, I think she's referring to the other one, which talks about the mandatory expulsion for one year.
Right.
So it's not absolute suspension, it's expulsion.
It's a mandatory expulsion for a student who's in possession of a firearm, a deadly weapon, a dangerous instrument, a martial arts weapon, or is involved with the sale/distribution of a controlled substance. Now, I don't think there are too many preschool students out there hawking H, but that doesn't mean that it can't happen. It doesn't mean that they might not be in possession of that kind of stuff and it doesn't mean that they might not be here with a gun.
This says mandatory.
Right, well, it should be mandatory.
That means there's no negotiation.
Right.
There is nothing further that this board or this superintendent can do but expel that preschool child. Instead of, frankly, this is a legal action against parents. So I just think, I can understand it for other grades, kindergarten, but preschool just, it seems that it's the mandatory part of it for a very, very young child, accidentally, and thank God I don't think, please not would, you have to worry about that here. In some places you do still, but it's mandatory. Punishment, one year, three and four-year-olds, you know? It's crazy. I won't vote for it. I'm in the minority.
All right, is there anything else? Michelle?
I, I hear what you're saying, Valerie. And I have a feeling that because of the number of references to the law in that paragraph, that that is state law and that we have no...
It's actually federal. The government preschool act is federal.
So, so I don't think we have the option not to include it or we would be...
I have complaints.
Yeah, I have complaints. I don't think, this is one of the areas that we can go out on a limb unfortunately because I kind of agree with you, but I don't think we can. I can certainly check, but I'm pretty sure that that is law.
Well, I mean, if, then why are we going to vote on it? If it's mandatory, then we have to do it, we have to adopt it no matter what, we can't question. There are many policies that we've abridged in one way or another. And I just think that this is draconian in a way and ties everyone's hands from helping this preschooler in a very, very bad situation. But no, we're going to get rid of this three, four-year-old for a year without discretion. So I'm not going to ever support that.
All right, is there anything else? All right, there's a motion on the table to approve 5114 for a first reading. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Valerie, anyone else? Any abstaining? All right, the motion passes. I would say that if anyone has comments they want to send to Michelle, would that be all right, Michelle? If people forwarded their comments to you in advance of considering this for a second reading, that would be, would be helpful. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, my God.
Yes. Is there a second? Seconded by Greg and Jen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.